We need to go up there and dig up that bad spot. And put crush and run back in it. Until y'all figure out what we, you know, gonna do to it.
Because it's only getting worse, and if we get the wet winter, it's gonna be even worse than that.
You got that right.
So, so other than-
I mean, I hate to go up there and dig it up, put asphalt in it, and then a year later, we up there grinding all that in, and doing reclamation, and a foot deep, and putting cement in it now, you know? I know y'all probably gonna get some more calls on it.
But you're gonna go foot about it to get down to the- you're gonna go more than a foot to get down to the hardpan on that spot, I imagine.
Probably will, yeah.
So, were we in agreement that we're not going- that we're not into road building or road paving business anymore?
Yeah, but I think the patching, we're gonna have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I mean, I can get them, I know right by my house, anywhere from Stone Gables to, to Stallins to, I think you got a couple more in your district, John? Yeah. And I've also got calls on it.
Right. I mean, but the patching, we need to look at the process of how the patching is done, is it, are we gonna just go out there and dump some asphalt and smooth it up with a truck, you know, or, I know we don't have a, probably a smooth drum roller, but, or traffic roller, but are we just gonna, are we gonna cut out the bad areas and figure out what's going on in there? Because it's, it seems that the process has gotta be looked at of how we're fixing these roads, because it's, Stallins has been a hot topic, Davis has been a hot topic, Smith has been a hot topic, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a-
I rode, I rode down Davis the other day, and I mean, yes, got some spots in it, but I, I didn't see a whole, unless I missed it, I was on a bicycle, I didn't see a whole lot of spots on Big Davis, it was, I think we got that kind of patch, you know, we got a Band-Aid on it right now.
Right.
And I think John's, John's heard this tune before, but I think for the rest of y'all, that, that one of the things we get blistered on the most is not if there's a pothole in a road, but if there's a pothole in a road, and it takes two weeks because we're on something else to fix it, they complain for two weeks that there's a pothole. To fix it, and it don't last but a month, well, to, to the callers or the people that are complaining, we never fix it. Because it was bad for two weeks, then it was fixed, and then a month later, it's bad again. So, it's almost worse to have a go-back than it is to not fix it at all. So, I think that's what John's talking about, we gotta figure out how to, you know, even if it takes a little longer or a little more money to fix it, where it's a, where it's a one-time fix, where we only get the complaints for that two-week period, and then after that, they kind of forget about it because it's, it's actually fixed, not just, not just a patch. But I just, yeah, I think for us, we separate what's a pothole or a patch or a fix in a road that's a bad spot, as opposed to any, any section of road that we're gonna pave, if we're gonna contract and all that. Then we get into the projects, like if something happens where a washout over the edge of the road, where we lose part of the road or something like that. You know, that's, to me, is a project, and, and you know, that might mean subcontractors, it might mean our guys, it might mean, you know, bringing in pipe or dirt or gravel or, or whatever, you know?
I, I agree, and there's, I'll take Stallins Road for example, out there, it, it, the whole, from the get-go, it, it, something wasn't right, so the road's just coming apart, you fix one area, it moves-
Stallins Road, I drove a bus on it though last week.
Yeah, and it, you, the process moves over, but let's take Thornton Road and Bradley, you got a couple of potholes, the guys go out there, they put some asphalt down, great, the problem solved, it doesn't, it doesn't rear, rear, your rear emerge its head somewhere else, it's, the pothole's fixed, it's a different issue there.
Right.
Stallins, Stallins and Thornton are two different-
Well, you know, Stallins, you know, we had a contractor when I'm there, C.W. Matthews, and they milled out these areas and put asphalt in there, but probably what we should've done was came back with two inches of asphalt over the whole thing, and they dumped it back.
And I have to, something, but I don't think two inches of asphalt would've fixed it because the base is still not right. And I go back to old-school paving, I look at Hol- I'll bring up Holmes Hawkins Drive, as I've done many times, that road was paved in, what, ninety-seven, ninety-eight? It doesn't have a first patch in it, not the first pothole, and it's heavily traveled, trash trucks, construction, fuel trucks, food trucks, and Uptown Sheriff's cars and residents that live on that road, there's no patches. That's what, twen- at least twenty-four years and not a single patch. The process that, use that road for an example, something was done right there. There's no callbacks, it extended well past its warranty period. These other roads, you know, it goes back to a, you start with the foundation, Stallins, some people like the cement on one of the road. I like the eight, you know, six inches or eight-inch base, it ain't, you know, it's not, primarily not going anywhere, so the whole, you get what you pay for.
Well, all soil is different.
Yeah.
That's true.
All potholes got a different, you know, it's a, really, it's a case-by-case, you know, we know Stallins, but then there's some potholes, don't leave anything but Uncle Dale to go in there-
Right.
And with his, you know, his guy, and, um, put a little patch on there, and he's good to go. So, I mean, it's a case-by-case, my basis on that. Any, any input from the county on the, on the potholes, while we're on the pothole?
I'm gonna say about the, uh, asphalt we putting in, it's more or less, we'd argue that with it years and years and years, is a temporary fix. A cold patch is, until you connect, we get a fix.
So, when we contracted with the gas company, we would put that in there till Sam hauls. Like if he would come through and cut it out in concrete, but that was what they did in my, every time, or all the service paths we made in the road.
So, you said we need to get away from the cold patch and go to something different?
Well, like Chuck said, just, it took, to us, it was always a temporary thing. So, get us by until the contractor get in there.
Right, so that might be part of the problem, then, if we're, if we're doing it as a temporary patch, till the contractor gets there, and the contractor never gets there.
Right.
That's what we're here for, like, I mean, you tell us cold patch it, and, you know, it's just temporary.
It's something different, it looks like the same to me, that's what we always did.
So, do we need to go, go away from the cold patch and just go ahead now and take the time, cut it out, and patch it back with right way? The right way and, and be done with it? I mean, it may take it-
It'll eliminate that step.
Yeah, instead of doing three a day, you only, you only may be able to do one patch a day, but it's done right, and it's done.
The only bad thing about it is, the longer you leave it there, with the cold patch unit, it's poor, and the water gets in it, and then the water gonna get back out of it, like you said, it runs, and then to start, the whole what you fix, it'll start deteriorating around as you walk and walk and walk. You know, the longer you leave it open, the more trouble you gonna have, I think.
If you go ahead and fix it, like what you're talking about, Sam, go ahead and fix it, seal it up, will be the best way to do it.
It's great, I mean, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Figure out what we can do and do improve it. Anything else on the, how we're patching or not patching?
I want those concrete patches, if they ever come back to reclaim the road and grind it, when they get those, just stop that machine. But we've done it, but that's different, concrete. That was just a fact. I mean, just more like what Chuck said, that's what we did, we would bring new, a whole neighborhood, and for a temporary, to keep traffic coming through, we put a cold patch. Then they come back and cut the three-by-three or whatever hole it was.
Get a little bit bigger, where they can-
Yeah, a little bigger than the whole, well, it's concrete. We don't have nick, they even, they, they would die of concrete, black, they would ask, oh, they leave it white, it was concrete.
Anything else on the board? As long as you got any input or questions, other, woo, have you heard Stallins?
Stallins is awful.
Okay.
Don't mention Stallins again.
Right. What's the next on the list, Mr. Rhythm?
Um, I, I think just any, any thoughts y'all have about, so should, so just kind of building off that, should paved road maintenance be its own area where you've got a supervisor and you've got a staff that just does that every day?
Are we gonna have that much work for paved road maintenance, I mean, we gotta get, I, I'm not trying to overwork anybody, we need to be able to cross-
My opinion, and I've, I've seen it in, in public works in, in several different places, is right-away maintenance, road maintenance, and, and in the cities, you don't have that much dirt road, so it's right-away maintenance, road maintenance, sanitation are different divisions. So, I, I would think ours would be right-away sanitation, probably dirt road maintenance, and then paved road maintenance, and then the paved road maintenance is probably where you get the, the one-offs, I'll call them, the, the, where you got a shoulder problem or where you got a culvert problem, because you're gonna have the, you're gonna have the big equipment to repair roads anyway. That's where you're gonna have your backhoe or your trackhoe that you're gonna need to, to dig. Whatever issue you're gonna have off the road, you're gonna need it, um, and I don't think you'll need that on right-away maintenance or scraping the dirt roads or clipping the dirt roads, uh, and you don't need it in sanitation, other than the backhoe to push down the cans and stuff and move stuff around. So, I would say sanitation, uh, right-away maintenance, dirt road maintenance, and then maintenance, like road and project.
And then your, your, uh, your, your paved road rate, uh, maintenance would also include signs, signage, stuff like that.
And to me, that's gonna be your biggest function, is, is your road maintenance, projects, signs, that kind of stuff.
What's y'all's thoughts on that? Speak up, well, like I said, that's, you already gave us one thing we need to change, and that's on that cold patch.
Well, there's a lot of areas that we need to go out on dirt roads, when we have turnouts, especially on crossroads, all the field that comes across and fills up the ditch, you have to go back in there and dip it out, to where it can continue to flow, and after a while, it gets so, so much of it, you really need to go in there with a, the three-fifteen and, uh, the cannon and clean all that stuff up.
And then you piled up.
I, I would almost classify that as a project, though, instead of, I mean, I know it's part of dirt road maintenance, but it's, it's, once dirt road maintenance gets to be a project, because all that you're doing is either scooping it up and hauling it out, or scooping it up and moving it somewhere else to keep it from, so I'm thinking of, when I think of dirt road maintenance, I mean, clipping the shoulders, crowning the road, and trimming the limbs, or, or whatever we're doing to the limbs.
That's where the stuff come from, it's all dirt roads. Well, to me, to me, I almost say, I come, you can't put it back in the dirt road, and this is wet, wet, you know? And then maybe put some gravel on it, 'cause that's where it came from.
Well, we're talking about the gravel, you seeing better results out of M-10s, or, I see we putting a lot of M-10s on the road.
Well, that's the cheapest thing that we can get.
Well, we're talking about M-10, what, what are we, what are we wasting, better? What y'all's input on the, well, we're talking about roads and stuff, I'm just-
Some places, we put M-10s, if the road's already hard, you know, we get a little low place, but if it's a soft place or something, we put crush and run, and then try to fill it up.
Any ideas or differences we need to do on that, or we pretty much got it where we wanted?
A lot of the dirt roads with the pipes on, need to be built up, 'cause that's where all the potholes get started, 'cause the road can drain.
And it's draining over, I mean, I, I can tell you, Mount Springs Church Road, old Luke Smith, every rain we get, it's washing over the roads where the drains are clogged, so it comes over and it washes the whole road off.
Like I said, you get some dry weather like this, you can take that, 'cause it's just sand and gravel, it's washed in the ditch, just clean them out, just put it back in the road.
With some of, on Mount Springs Church, which that is my area, you got a lot of driveways up on the hill, and it's real sand, it comes out these both driveways, cut across, we done been down there and cleaned out those pipes, that Miss Wendy was talking about, it comes another rain, it stopped right back up, and we tore it up on top of the hill. Down in the bottom, that crossdrain, we can only dig out so far, and so much sand, then got down to the bottom. We can't go on private property in order to get the waters to drink. Like John said, that's the spot that we need to build up, we just don't have the dirt to build it up with.
Just a constant, constant thing you have to do.
It's a constant battle every time you rain, over there.
Especially in the sound like Chuck said, there ain't nothing but sand.
Now, we don't have a borrow pit with good dirt, and that, because I know you can't find it anywhere.
You know, one observation on the, I'll say, like, some of the driveways, you can go to Joe Miller, you can go to certain driveways, I'll just take Joe Miller as one, if you take a backhoe or something, scoop the dirt out, and push it up on the hill, uh, other side of the road, in the edge of the yard, first rain you get, it washes right back in the road, so it, it really defeats your purpose, you're good for a couple days till the next rain, and what you scooped out is coming right back, and so you defeat your purpose, you gotta remove that material, whether you carry it back down the road, or put it in a clay spot, or whatever, blend it back in the road, blade it in, but just taking a rubber tire back and pushing it up on the hill, it's-
Well, we're just trying to fix it for time, but it-
It's good to the next rain, then it, it stops right back into your culvert, and, um-
It just, like John said, there's just so many of them.
Yeah, I mean, you can't keep rolling.
You must've seen, you must've seen the guy out there with Cabo scooping out the ditches last weekend.
First driveway on the, coming off Harris Morton, first driveway on the right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he, he cleaned all the ditches and was fixing his driveway, I'm going, you-
I'm gonna see it.
Right on Joe Miller.
Joe Miller.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it probably come out of his driveway.
Uh-huh, he putting it right back in the driveway.
No, that, that's coming down from Harris Morton, coming down the road, stopping at that first driveway.
Well, I just know he, the ditch was filled up, and he was sitting scooping it out and going right back in the driveway with it, and I said, thank you for cleaning the ditch, because it was full.
John, let me ask this, on, so on dirt, we know, and I know y'all know, because this is a habit that I think every human gets into, our historical knowledge is what, is our Achilles tendon, I guess you'd say, because you probably know where the top ten or twenty spots are when we get a heavy rain, off the top of your head. Are we taking that information and putting it into a game plan to say, alright, when we got pretty weather, and we got a second that we're not just wide open on something, let's go get these ten roads before it rains, and, and give us a game plan going on that? And if you say, we don't have time to do it, that's, that's, that's an answer, I, I get that. Or if, you know, we know it's gonna be bad, so we just prepare for them when it does rain? You know, I, I'm just wondering if we, a lot of times, we know things, and we're like, alright, we, let's just prepare that that's gonna happen when it rains, instead of, let's prepare to fix it before it rains, type thing, does that make, make sense?
Yeah, but it's raining, we've been getting the last couple of years, ain't like what we used to get.
Yeah, yeah, there's some of them, when you get six inches in thirty minutes.
That we had last October. 'Cause I was late up there, it ain't never run around like it did that day.
But those are the exceptions to the rule, I think, I, I mean, yeah, I saw that on upriver road, plenty of you, everything else that-
Right, and then what hold the plump too down there in that puddle, and you get up there to the church.
I ain't never seen that in my, in my life, but I think that's the one-off, that's the exception to the rule, not, you know, that's not normal, so. And, and I think anybody that would complain about a road that sees something like that, I mean, they're gonna complain, but they can't hold it against us, something that's hadn't happened in twenty, fifty years, but I just think we need to make sure we're, um, we got a plan to address the areas. Maybe it's something that, you know, every three months, we go out and do the test of this road, you know, clean it out, and, and pull that dirt instead of having to get it up here on the hill so we can hurry and get to the next one.
Right.
It's a problem, too. Go ahead and just get that dirt out of the way, so that we minimize the number of problems we got.
Hey, if we can, so we can kind of divide us up, how about, how about right-ways? Any comments, commissioners about right-away, grass?
I know y'all haven't been able to keep up with grass this year because of the rain, it's been crazy.
So, how many, how many mowers do we have total? Two mowers?
We just got them two, one Jerry's on with the back wing, and then we got the other one, who's got the seven-foot mower. And he mainly stays over toward Hatter, around, uh, I mean, Jerry, Jerry cuts a bunch.
So, we got one back wing, we got the, the pull behind seven-foot, and then we got the, uh-
We got two arm mowers.
I got two arm mowers.
And then we've got two farm tractors with bushhogs behind them, but we don't have any right-handers.
Yeah, old ones.
Old ones, we just don't have nobody to run.
I thought we bought two back wings in the county.
One back wing and one seven-foot.
Okay, alright, I was thinking we had two.
So, if you had more mowers, do you have people to run?
No.
So, that's not the problem?
That's one of the problems, this year has been extra bad because of the rain, it was either too wet to cut, or the rain was getting the grass going ten times faster, I've seen it all over, uh, e- everywhere, not being able to keep up with the grass. But one of the problems is, I know the, and I joke with Jerry and them, but the brand-new mowers, brand-new blades, if the grass is waist-high, you're just hitting it, knocking it down, and it's throwing big, long pieces of grass like that, that were chopped up. It don't look near as good as if you cut it when it was twelve inches high with a, with a bush mower, it looks like it's mowed in instead of, uh-
Like chewed up the field or something.
It's in the field, not bad.
Right, and, and so when you go down the road, you see big clumps of grass where you, you know it's, it's waited too long to cut that grass, but there's-
I've seen yards the same way.
Yeah. And mine has been one of them, and it was too wet to cut, but, but I don't, I don't let it stay that way, and I, I think that's one of the things we gotta look at, is making sure we got enough mowers and enough people to do the job, because if not, then, then we can't expect it to get any better than it is if, if you only got two mowers, because the number of miles of dirt ra- of right-away don't change.
I wish we had us a slope mower and a bush hog behind it.
That one we're talking about, like, City's got, that's why I-
Well, City's got a arm mower with a bush hog behind it.
Right.
Different, I think, John's, I'm like-
But I like, I like the slope mower, 'cause he can go down a dirt road, he can cut it in, you know, he can cut slopes, or he can cut off like this.
Or hang over a ditch.
Yeah, hang over a ditch, or, or whatever. You know, we had one of that for years and years, and we had a lot of trouble out there.
Broke half and two, if I remember right, that Caterpillar, whatever it was.
Challenger.
Challenger.
And then, then we got rid of it, and then we had that new hauler.
Question, I know we've had some downtime on the tractors, are we sitting there in a position that we need to be looking? Another one we just talked about before the work session, so we got the work session going.
That tractor is probably going on eight years old.
With nine thousand hours, correct?
I'm pretty sure it's probably pretty close to that.
Alright, are we-
It's set at eight thousand, I don't got much from it.
I mean, is, is it, is it getting to the point that we're getting all the goodie out of it? And, I mean, we've experienced a lot of downtime with it this year, right?
Well, I didn't really have nobody to run.
Alright, so if we didn't have, if we didn't have the, even if we had a mower, and we didn't have nobody to put, you know, the-
I mean, Chuck, Chuck, he's been on one at different times, you know, to help us out.
And that's what I've been doing during the work time.
Yeah.
John, let me ask you a question, that, when I was over parks, I hated to be asked this question, because you can't defend it, no matter what, so, trust me when I say there's no judgment here, do you have a spare mower that if one breaks down, you can get off of that one while it's in the shop and get on another one and go? Or do you, or you have to-
Them two old tractors we got down there, I don't know if it's the mowers or the tractors are working like out, too, 'cause I know somebody tried to use one.
I know that one defeated Oakwood's, you know?
Yeah.
But if it's something as simple as sharpening blades or changing a blade on, on, on a bush hog, it, that bush hog, the, the guy's maintaining it, he's fixing it and then getting back on it, or either, somebody's fixing it and the driver's getting back on it, so that's some downtime, whether fifteen minutes or, or two days, it's some downtime. I, I say I hated to get asked that question, because it sounds so crazy to have a brand-new tractor sitting on the yard, but if you add up all the times that you're doing maintenance on a tractor in a year's time, it'll pay for that tractor sitting there.
Well, you just answered the question, you've got two mowers, you don't always run, it sound like they need to be gone, and we need to replace it.
And then you bought four of them.
You know?
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm gonna throw the City's mower out again, with the, uh, they got a, um, Spuck was giving me this idea that if he had a rotary mower behind him with the bomb, he said, you could cut, you could cut one pass down with another tractor, am I, am I thinking right? Because right now, if Spuck goes down Oak Clinton, Jerry's gotta come back by him with a, with the back wing behind him, right?
Right.
If-
Well, most of the spots down Oak Clinton.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we had-
The back wing ain't gonna go down up there.
That's why I'm asking, if we had, are, are we missing the opportunity, or is it too much on a tractor, if we took something and looked at?
Well, that's reading I said, I'd like to have a slope mower and a bush hog behind it.
Lock down at the Joe's Bay area?
Mm-hmm.
Would be great.
Yeah, it'd be great Clinton.
Yeah.
But you got, you've already told me you got two mowers that you don't even know are gonna work, so it sound like to me, they need to go.
Yeah.
And we need to be finding something, whether it be another arm mower, another, you know, whatever you're-
I think the mowers are good shakers, the tractors just go out.
Well, a mower's cheap, tractors, tractor, if it, tractor won't spin it, it ain't, I know the air conditioners don't work on those like Jerry's, huh? I can just see him bellyaching when they had to get on one of them. The air conditioner ain't working on that one. Alright.
What about sanitation?
Well, let's, any, any more questions on the right-away? Jerry, what's your thoughts? We need to improve, how can we improve? Make a pardon?
Well, just as hard as I can.
Do we need to, do we need to change, any ideas how we can ma- make it better?
They like to say, you know, slope mower with a mower behind it, down at Joe's Bay.
I mean, it was hell by a bunch, so we're going to find somebody to run it. And that's been the trouble here in the last couple of years, trying to find somebody.
Okay.
Trying to find help.
Alright, before, alright, was, we, let the board decide on the ne- next meeting about maybe going out and looking, soliciting pins for a, putting two, putting whatever equipment you got needs to hit the auction. Obviously, it's not being used, uh, I'm presuming ours are, you know, high enough that we don't need to even try to fix what we got, correct? Alright, well, that's what we're trying to find, we don't, we, we don't wanna be running down the road no more with pickup running, falling the doors off, we don't need equipment doing the same way, because that ain't helping us none. So, uh, what we'll do, the next, the next, uh, meeting on the agenda, we'll have surplus equipment on the agenda, and then we'll also put on the agenda, uh, what your, what y'all, you know, recommendations are to help the right-way crew as far as, if you, if there's a slope mower with one behind it, well, let's, let's research and see what we can find there. And if you, if you sit there and you get one of them arm mowers, and you thinking, hey, if it keeps messing up, obviously, we don't need to keep fixing it, we got nine thousand dollar transmission, and I don't wanna see it like the, cut that Caterpillar backhoe, we done put motors on a couple times. You just need to, you know what I'm saying? I hate to throw mon- money away if you're gonna keep, you know, patching it and putting it out there and doing it again.
Yeah, and Chairman, we've been working hard to get our base salary up to where we can attract and keep good employees, so, you know, if anybody, I know everybody's struggling to get work, because people just don't seem to wanna work right now, they, they never did, but they really don't right now. But, you know, it, it's not 'cause they can go somewhere else and get better pay, I think we're competitive with, with counties around us for tractor drivers and stuff like that, so it's a matter of finding people that are wanting to work, willing to work, and that we think are good workers, not, you know, not just hire somebody because they will accept the position.
Have a good equipment to run.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta really do your work, your due diligence now on interviewing people better than you had to in the past, I mean, everybody, because you don't, you wanna hire the best, not just hire somebody to fill a position for-
How we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna key on something, something I'm big on, how we sit on maintenance, I mean, as far as servicing and all these, we got a pretty good program on that.
I think, I think that's fine.
Okay. So, Andy telling me he got, I agree, the grease, if you grease them too much, they wear out. You know where I'm going with that one? You're wearing out, you put too much grease on it. I had to pick on Andy, I wish he was here, I could show an uptick on him right now, grease worms to get him. Alright, sanitation?
Yeah, I wanna say, Chairman, I think, since we first got on this board, we've changed a lot at our, our recycling centers. The signage looks better, the yards are cleaner, I mean, we've done a lot of things that, that it doesn't look like a dump site, it looks like a recycling center. And I think the better we have it looking, the more people wanna do better when they bring their, their trash to throw it out. In the past, when we didn't have an attendant that would say, hey, don't throw that on the ground, you pick it up, if it falls out the back of your truck while you throwing a bag in there, pick it up and put it in the trash. I, I had a lady, I had a trailer full of stuff the other day, and the lady at, well, on the creek came out there when I was throwing, she said, just wanna make sure you gonna put the metal over there in the metal bin, and I'm like, yes, ma'am, uh, yeah, I, I know. You ain't getting me with that one, so I said, yeah, I know to put the metal in the bin over there, but, um, I think we've come a long way with that. The question I have is, I know we're down to, I think, one full, we used to have a, like, a full-time at every station, then we had, what, I guess y'all call it floaters to go to each one, now, we've got, um, all part-time, but one or two full-time, one full-time left. How do y'all see that change, changing or- How do y'all see that change, changing or has changed from when we had one full-time at each one? I think we still got some good quality people at some of them, and then some of them we struggle with. I don't wanna get in a, a, a habit of a part-time person that don't care about being there or don't wanna be there, but then we get back into, it's just a free-for-all to come throw your stuff out.
I think, I think we got some pretty good people at some of them. I mean, we got some of us on nothin' age, but they do come to work every day and they good folks.
Over the last couple of years, we've lost several.
Well, I know the, the ones that I've probably been to the most are Walnut Creek, Overland, and Juliette. I rarely go in there, they're not immaculate, nothing, I mean, nothing out of place, and that's, that's a good sign. Now, you used to go in there and all of them would be, I mean, they would be overflowing, and, and we were struggling to keep them. You know, people were complaining because they would all be full, we still have a problem with recycling ones, you know, the cardboard ones, but we can't get them picked up enough. I get those complaints all the time, I was asked, you know, the one's always full, why don't you get three more? I said, well, if we can't empty one, why wouldn't we get three more? You can't empty them, but, um, yeah, that's not an issue that we can solve, I mean, we can't get them picked up, so. Do y'all have any thoughts or ideas on, um, how, how that, how to keep that? Cause we got the folks that are up in age, they may not wanna work forever, they might not be there forever, how do we grow that next level to making sure that we, we got this five years from now? With part-time people?
Let, let me think about, Adaway, Ronnie, is that Ronnie Adaway called me? And he said he did a quote survey of our convenience centers and said that, uh, we weren't recycling enough. What's, what's your thoughts, I mean, he said that.
Oh, you want their thoughts, you don't want my thoughts?
I'm, I'm asking for all of them, but he literally called me and said that we're, you know, we're missing an opportunity to where we're not recycling enough, and he said that they actually went toured, it's alright, we just, cause we just had this call not too long ago. And, uh, I was gonna bring it up, and now we got a work session, a great time. He said we weren't recycling enough, that they were seeing too much going into the, the catchalls and not being so, but you're telling me they're not dumping them enough?
That, I have hardly ever been to one-on-one on a creek that that cardboard bin is, recycling bin with the little wind in it, it's not slap full, where you can't fit it. To the point that I get at least two calls a week from people saying, this is a, part of my friends, this is a damn shame that I separate my stuff at the house and bring it up here in three different piles and then throw it in one dumpster. But that makes no sense, because the plastic is full and the cardboard is full.
I mean, I mean, them guys get full, and, you know, when they get up there, I mean, what do they do?
Do we need more?
They carry it back home, or do they throw it under the catchall?
That's what I'm asking, do we need more?
I get calls every week, at least two calls a week on my centers, where they're not picking up good containers. So if, if we have more, I, I don't think we're gonna pick up more frequently, Mr. Adaway called me today by accident, and we got a discussion of events needing to be emptied more often, and it's that they have my weekly route, and that's all he can come up with.
I mean, it's kinda, it, it don't make sense, him calling me, talking about we weren't recycling enough, so obviously, we, it's, it's a call we need to make and say, you know, if you can't handle it, who can?
Or, yeah, cause ask him, when did he make his, his visit, because if he made it on Friday and he dumps them on Thursday, that may be true, four hours later, but. End of that day, it was full again, and then it's full again for six more days.
I'm sure he's seeing all the TV boxes, and I mean, just packing cans when we do, there's a lot of cardboard. People just don't wanna break it down, put it in there, you know, but that's probably what he's seeing at all the cardboard.
Yeah.
If somebody buys a refrigerator, buys a TV, and that big old box or whatever, most folks, I would sit there, take the time to push it down and put it in that thing. And I don't know what would be more convenient for them, and I really don't.
The challenge we had on, on the whole recycling thing was, really, they were the only, only game in town, so to speak, you know, and, um, and we still have to pay them, uh, to come get all that stuff, and so, uh, you know, it's, it's not like a, we're, we're not making anything off of it, I mean, we're having to, uh.
Are we paying them, Jason, for, you know, how many cans they got here?
Yeah, it's per can, per, yeah, Angie, do you remember, it's per can, per, per week, or per times they empty, that's, I think. And so if we get, we can get more cans, but it's gonna cost us more. Um, the only option, I, I think we could have, which would be a logistical nightmare, I think, but would be buying a baler. You know, somebody told me a couple of years ago when we were going through all this stuff, a year and a half ago, whenever it was, when Adaway got back into it, or before they got back into it, uh, was that there was a little bit of money to be made in cardboard if you could bail it yourself. With us having that many different centers.
I can see a nightmare in the baler already.
If we had all twelve centers or all ten centers in one, one location, it'd be great.
If it came to a transfer station and it's processed a whole different route, that might work, but.
If it does make one can just for cardboard. I found my big can.
Catchall can.
I'm gonna play it, but just for cardboard that season.
Do we need a compactor for cardboard, would that be a solution?
I think you gotta sell it, bail it, so you'd have to have somebody to go through that container and put it into a baler and bail it.
Labor intensive.
If, if we can get whoever to check with Adaway and just figure out why I got that phone call and, and why we're not getting, you know?
Yeah.
There's a connection missing right here.
Yeah.
Because.
I can talk to them.
Alright, because, you know, I'm, I'm being told we're not, we're not recycling enough, and now I'm getting told that, well, we can't because it's not getting done, so.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a missing link, we figure out what that, where that's at.
Like Jason said, who else you gonna get?
I don't know.
That's the bad thing about it.
Yeah, I searched around. Yeah, I searched around and talked to different people, and, and there just wasn't really anybody out there.
Mm-hmm. Anything on ca- uh, sanitation? Is there anything of public works I've missed? Thoughts, comments?
Appreciate y'all.
No, we appreciate y'all, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
I mean, hey, I appreciate my guys, them jokers, they do a lot of stuff, that a lot of people don't even know nothing about.
Mm-hmm.
I do know some help down there will be nice, though. I'm on the south side of the county, pipe laying throughout the county, plus driving the dump truck.
Mm-hmm.
Run the bush code, I mean, I feel like my plate's full.
If you have a CDL, your plate is full.
Yeah.
Cause they're not easy to come by.
So Angie, Angie had a question that, kind of.
Go ahead, huh?
Yeah, it was about more.
I had a question about possibly getting more catchalls due to some of the cans being in such bad shape, and we are putting in a lot of money to fix the cans that we do bad. And they've been in operation for many, many years.
Do we have a life cycle plan for them, do we, like, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years? I think that's some.
Some of the cans have been here as long as I have, I've been here seventeen years.
So I think that's something that should be in your budget for, for ongoing maintenance. So, you know, maybe you inspect them every five years and then have a plan to do two a year, or, you know, something like that. But you rotate them out so that you get two at each center, and so you're, you're constantly rotating out, by the time they get to twenty-five years, you don't have to go, man, I got ten that I need, and we, that, that's gonna jump our budget up if you, you, you plan out all that.
Just thoughts, I saw somebody, somebody running the grapple truck, uh, was Etheridge, is it Etheridge that generally runs the grapple truck? I called the right name, the grapple truck.
That's Russell.
That's Russell. But Joseph is on it this week.
I know, I saw somebody different, but that gives me an idea.
Russell's off this week.
Alright, yeah, Russell, that's right, I'm, I'm bad, Gordon, okay. Would it be a help? And I'm just thinking outside of, if we sit down there and got, uh, basically Russell struck a whole two and a half cans, is that right?
Yeah, it probably hold pretty close to three if, if they been packed, if they not packed, they can probably put about four in.
Alright, well, here's my thoughts, I mean, have, have we ever thought about not cutting Russell, if we were to take and put, say, fifty-yard cans at each convenience center, not to, not to collect trash, but that should give, the same, Russell can go in there and ta- collect three cans and sit there and go on the fifty-yard, where you gotta row back and grab three cans at one trip, rather than taking these light loads like they're still doing? I'm just thinking about, uh.
Trips.
Trips, so, like, I seen Overland Way Monday, the first thing he was doing, but if he's sitting down there and was able to go in and fill a fifty-yard out of three cans and then pick up three and go, you, you got a rowback getting three load, three trips, and you got the grapple truck getting three trips. Would that be a, a help to where when he goes to, let's say he goes to Juliette, I don't know how many cans up there, to say he can get half of what, what's there at Juliette, and if he had a fifty-yard sitting there, he could put the other half on it?
Well, they ain't but three cans up there, the metal can and the.
Well, I'm just, I'm just using it, cause I didn't know it was up there, but you see where I'm using like Overland Way? If there's a fifty-yard can sitting there, that he could go through there and he's, put three cans on? And leave it there for one of the rowbacks, and then go grab him three and go on?
Six loads versus?
Yeah, you just got six loads versus, you know, four. And if you, and if you had your heavier, your other, uh, centers that were, you could put a fifty-yard can on. You know, ain't nobody gonna be throwing a fifty-yard can, but you can make sure, you can make sure loaded up. I think you can get bigger than fifty or two, can't you, fifty about the biggest?
I imagine fifty is probably about the biggest.
That's about what he's got on his truck now, the fifty, but if he, if he could sit there and if, if he got to a convenience center and he grabbed those ones that he could sit there and double up, well, you, you're, you're getting three, three trips in one to one of the, the rowbacks. Just a thought.
They got them all split up in the, the three drivers split in three different areas, they have to kind of double up.
Mm-hmm.
With communication to do with it.
Yeah, but that would be, the drivers, you know, working amongst them, and, you know, or it'd be Russell, you know, saying, alright, I've got y'all, you know, I've got you a fifty-yard on this.
Russell usually hits Overland Garrison and Rock Creek.
Right.
But if we need him to go somewhere else, he will.
Right.
Like up in Eleven or go to Walnut Creek.
Mm-hmm.
Usually Joseph, he does Walnut Creek, I think, pretty much by himself.
Mm-hmm.
About like Rodney does Hattler, he does Hattler by himself. That's the metal can, trash compactor, but some of these sons, the trash compactor might sit there for two weeks, or it has to be all the way.
Mm-hmm. I just, I'm just looking at saving.
Like you said, if you have one sitting there and it's full, it wouldn't be like that, you need to be here five minutes and pick it up and get it out.
Even if they had to run in there and say, alright, you know, we're.
A day later, or a day and a half later, if he got it, you're still making one trip versus two, yeah.
And this is a thought to add, that capacity, that if Russell had to do nothing, if he could, let's just say we, Christmas time, he got behind. He could sit there and start going here and here and loading them up and go, and then you got, you got trucks that are normally, they're making three trips instead of one. You see him more of a staging, and then when he gets to the point he's done caught up, he can grab, he can grab them three and go, go to the dump with them.
Yeah.
It's saving time, I don't care how you look at it. Got ten minutes, anything else? Comments, anything?
I think if I got that.
Getting back to the dirt roads, I mean, a lot of times when it rains, we need a couple, three days for it to dry out, you know, before we can get off that and then
Mm-hmm.
be able to get back out of there, you know?
Yep.
And only other thing is the motor grader.
Don't we have that in the budget? Don't we have, I thought we did a motor grader.
Uh, who wouldn't do?
I thought we had the motor grader in the top.
Oh, one of them was.
Yeah, we had one motor.
I'm talking about buying one and rebuilding one, I thought we had one in there.
There's one of the motor grader in there.
I was thinking it was.
Yeah, it was in the, it was, it was, you got three vote, it's got three on the, on the, uh.
Re- re- reconditioned.
Yeah, cause they wanted to. Because where we had the three, we're gonna take the, one of the old cats and have it refurbished, which makes all kinds of sense, getting away from the, uh, this new stuff, and then, uh.
Deaf fluid, deaf.
Deaf fluid and computers, I mean, not that it's, it's already got computers on it, but it's not near as bad as.
No.
Yeah. And I, I saw, I saw a loader they got through, it looked like brands making new going to a rock war. Old school, I mean, it was. Was it, anything, anything else? Any comments from the board? If I'm motion to Chair.
Motion to the adjournment session.
Say it.
Say it, on favor, huh?
Ah.
Thank you, thank you, everyone of you.
Appreciate y'all, thank you all.